Okay. So, now we will call the meeting back to order. We're ready to go. And Miguel, would you like to present, please?
Sure thing. Once more, this is Miguel with the planning department. I'm here to present appeal 2016-238 for Adrian Lamby of Archer Norris on behalf of Jacob Forbes. The reason for revocation or invalidation of a approved registration is for violating 17.95.165. Point N. Point seven, which basically forbids all earth-moving activities on the portion of a parcel that is used for cannabis cultivation. Just real quick, the location of the five-acre parcel is at 5540 Mispa Drive in Murphy's. As you can see from this Google aerial from May 31, 2016, this is the extent of the cultivation area. You can see two pads with a few rows. However, in comparing it with aerial imagery from June 28, 2017, we can see that the cultivation area has expanded and grading and earth movement was done for the purposes of this expansion. Once more, this is the approximation, approximate extent of the cultivation area back in May 31, 2016. There are the areas highlighted in blue. And this is the extent of the cultivation area as of June 28, 2017. And once more, those new terraces were earth movement beyond the May 30, or the May 10, 2016 deadline, which fails to meet 17.95.165. Point N. Point seven. Right here are sheriff office aerials that they took on August 27th, or August 22, 2017. These were done via helicopter and photographic camera. You could clearly see the terraces and the earth movement. Here's another photo. Here is the submitted plot plan for the cultivation project. As you can see, the plot plan doesn't show as many rows and it doesn't show it to the extent of what it currently is as of June 28, 2017. I had a quick chance, or a chance to go over Mr. Lamby, I believe? Yeah, Mr. Lamby's brief. And he cited a 2015 aerial stating that cultivation was taking place in the areas that were nearly graded in 2017. And just for a little-
Miguel, if you could speak up a little bit, please.
Sorry.
I should too.
So, right here, I was just comparing what 2017 looks like in comparison to 2015. This is the extent of the cultivation area as of 2017. And this is what it looked like in 2015. Mr. Lamby claims that cultivation was taking place within the vegetation. And even if it was so, earth movement was supposed to have ceased as of May 10, 2016. And that's all for my presentation.
If I understand correctly, even though there's something in the staff report that would indicate that expansion is an issue here, what we're really, the issue here is whether there was grading.
The issue here is the violation of N. Seven, which is the whole provision. Earth movement beyond the May 10 deadline, also earth movement beyond the May 10 deadline for the purposes of expanding a cultivation site.
Yeah, but earth moving with the purpose of-
Earth movement's the main focus, yes.
And, yeah, are they within the size, canopy size that they applied for?
To my knowledge, yeah.
Thank you. So, really, it's grading is the issue.
Exactly.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Always a pleasure to be with you. My name's Adrian Lamby. I'm with Archer Norris. I'm here on behalf of the appellant's, California Kinetics. And I have with me their CEO, Jacob Forbes. Stand up for a moment, Jacob. He's here to answer any questions the commission may have after our presentation.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, I'm going to plug in my PowerPoint.
Okay.
And I'm going to start. Okay. One, because unlike the vast majority that come before you, this is a denial of a registered site rather than a denial pending application. So, my clients were approved and then a revocation was initiated by the department. And I want to speak before I launch into the presentation to the comments brought up by Mr. Lattish because I think they are important context here. It's true that we're talking about grading in this application, but we're not just talking-
Can I just interrupt for one second? Annette, could you please set the timer?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's accurate that we're talking about grading, but we are talking about, in this particular provision, N. Seven, grading for purposes of establishment of a new garden or expansion of an existing one. So, the issues of expansion and grading are interrelated, right? In order to deny under N. Seven, we have to find two things. One, the grading occurred. And two, that that grading was for purposes of expanding or establishing a new garden. That's the plain language of N. Seven. So, both issues are before the commission. Did grading occur? And was that grading for the purpose of expansion or establishment of a new garden? So, with that in mind, let's take a look at what we just heard from staff. Staff suggests that revocation is appropriate because indeed, in their view, the grow site was expanded after May 10, 2016. And to facilitate or enable that expansion, grading occurred, thus fulfilling the requirements of N. Seven. Now, the basis for that, as the commission just saw, is these two aerials. We have the aerial from May 31, 2016, right here. And we have the aerial from June 28, 2017, right here. And no mistake about it, there is a cultivation present in the 2017 aerial that is not present in the 2016 aerial in what I would call the easterly component of the garden. However, I think we have to ask ourselves this threshold question. Why is the May 31 aerial taken after enactment of the urgency ordinance? The baseline, right? How do we establish the size of a garden beyond which expansion is impermissible? Well, let's take a look, as we saw earlier, at the site diagram that was submitted with the application. Now, as the commission can see, there are 75-foot setbacks around the perimeter right here, three 75-foot setbacks. It's a circular roughly, or hexagonal shape in the southerly portion of the parcel. Now, if we take GIS measurements of the setbacks of the 2017 cultivation, we see it's 76 feet on that southerly setback and actually 93 feet on the westerly setback. So, the cultivation at its maximum, so to speak, in this 27 photo, is actually still within the area diagrammed in the applications submitted. It's just greater than what was photographed on May 31, 2016. But why did my client diagram the photo, or the site plan, the way he did in his application? Well, he was cultivating in 2015, as were many of the applicants under the urgency ordinance. And indeed, he used his 2015 cultivation to meet the requirement of prior cultivation. He submitted these photos as evidence of his prior cultivation. They were, had date stamp information embedded in the photos as shown here. They were from June and August of 2015. And my client's means of meeting the prior cultivation requirement encompassed his cultivation activities in 2015. Now, unfortunately, the quality of the aerials in 2015 is not great. This is black and white here, but that's what we got. And if we look at this aerial, you can see smart pot cultivation kind of mixed in here. And this aerial dates back to September 23, 2015. So, this is actually a partially harvested site. You can see there's been quite a bit of foot activity in this region and you still have some remaining plants in this area. Let's compare that with the 2017 aerial that the county's relying on. And for kind of a point of reference, I've found this, these triangular bush configurations, which can be found in both photos. Gives us a little bit of a reference point here. And we see that the size of the cultivation, the westerly bound of the cultivation in these two photos, is substantially similar. There may be, you know, a couple more plants here in 2017, but gosh, it's awfully close. So, I think the question before the commission is when we're talking about expansion or establishment of new cultivation sites, what is the baseline? Is the baseline a single point in time, May 10, 2016? Well, as we know, cultivation is seasonal. The configuration of sites changes. The number of plants that folks choose to plant for economic reasons changes. So, when an applicant, like my client, applies based on their 2015 cultivation, that's what they have used to qualify themselves as prior cultivators under the urgency ordinance, they submit a site diagram based on the extents of their 2015 cultivation activity. And then they choose to grow less in 2016. A satellite happens to snap an image of that. Are they then precluded from growing again to the full extent of their registration? And I would submit that they should not be. And I think that interpretation is supported by the urgency ordinance. The registrant must provide evidence satisfactory to the planning director that no later than May 10, 2016, he or she had taken demonstrable steps towards the development of a commercial medic cannabis cultivation site. Well, lots of folks, my clients included, relied on their 2015 cultivation activities to satisfy this requirement. And it doesn't say on May 10, 2016. It says no later than May 10, 2016. And indeed, if we look at section N. Seven of the ordinance, which is what the staff is relying on in this denial, it says no grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10, 2016. It's not disputed by anyone, I think, that one is allowed to, for example, remove brush that has grown in an existing cultivation site, right? That much is clear. You just can't do that for the purposes of making your site bigger or of establishing a new site. But the question is, when we think about what are the bounds of the site, what is our frame of reference? And if the commission adopts the approach that an aerial taken in May, on May 31, after the May 10 deadline, is the baseline, I think that's inconsistent with the way that the ordinance worked in practice. Because in practice, folks were submitting based on their 2015 cultivation and the size of that cultivation. So, bottom line, if we accept the 2015 garden as the baseline, there hasn't been a material expansion of that. And therefore, any grading, you know, and again, we've, as we've discussed in prior hearings, the definition of grading that we're operating under is quite narrow. It's not, it's not just grading that would require a permit. It's, you know, disturbing earth and removing ground cover, things like that, which undeniably did occur at this site. That's not, that's not in dispute. Hand tools and foot traffic did disturb the vegetation, the question about. The question is, was it for the purpose of expanding or establishing a new grow site? And my clients here were growing in that area in 2015. They submitted a site diagram demonstrating that they were growing in that area in 2015. And simply because they were not, didn't happen to be growing in that area when a satellite overflew the site on May 31, 2015, I believe it's unfair to deprive them of their license on that basis. So, with that, we would submit. My client is here to answer any questions the commission may have.
I have a question about your rather selective quotation from N. Seven, which section starts as of May 10, 2016, "All grading and earth movement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed other than that grading necessary for the setback adjustment." And then what you were quoting is talking about no additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted. That's referring back to the setback grading they're talking about. But the first sentence is very clear. And it talks about in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation. So, we accept, if we accept what you say is the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation, which is as of what you're showing in 2015, that first sentence, if we also look at the sheriff's, particularly the sheriff's photograph, it's, looks pretty clear to me that there has been grading within that cultivation site. And it seems to me that that takes care of your case.
Well, I have to disagree, Commissioner Lattish. And here's why. I think N. Seven has to be read in whole part, not just, not just taking that first sentence in isolation. And I actually submit that the last sentence, which we put up on the, on the screen, doesn't apply just to lot, not lot line adjustments, but proportional adjustments, as we've been calling them, right? Here's what I think the interpretation that you just suggested would produce. Let's say we have someone who's registered a distinct grow area and it's consistent throughout. Let's take away the seasonal changes issue, right? You have distinct grow area. Inevitably, over, you know, the two-plus years that the urgency ordinance has been in existence, that grow area is going to be encroached upon by vegetation, by bushes, by grass, et cetera. If the interpretation of N. Seven is you may not grade in your existing garden after May 10, 2016, and as we all know, the interpretation of grading that's been read into this is extremely searching, what are, what are farmers to do? If they can't even protect their existing grow areas from encroachment by bush and grasses and things like that? I mean, they have to walk around their plants? All of that, under the interpretation of N. Seven that you just suggested, I believe, would be in violation of the ordinance.
I think, I think I'll, I think Commissioner Wooster is probably ready to answer that question.
Yes, sir.
Your client didn't just remove vegetation, did he? He actually graded and created terraces?
The, so, my client can speak a little in more detail to what was done, but my understanding is this was non-blade activity where they used hand tools to dig areas to put the plants in so that they could be grown in the ground.
Well, the sheriff's photo seems to show terracing.
Yeah, the, so, that's a natural slope which, you know, has the effect of being terraced by rows of plants being put in there. But my understanding, and again, Mr. Forbes can speak to this in more detail if the commission would like, is that that was the condition in 2015 as well. And indeed, the application, if we go back to that, go back to that, the application site diagram, it says, and this is, you know, all the way back in, you know, when it was submitted, that there are terraces in that area. So, that wasn't a new development.
Well, there were terraces in that area, but looking at the aerials, it appears that those terraces got expanded, if you will, to the left side of the picture, from 2016 into 2017. Is that correct?
I, yes, from 2016 to 2017.
Right, okay. Now, given that, to create terraces, you have to move earth. And Mr. Lattish, I think, is correct when he focuses on the first sentence of N. Seven. It pretty clearly says all the grading, earth moving has to have been completed. Now, if all your client did was remove vegetation, that's not earth moving. So, you don't need to worry about another case in which a grower has to protect his grow site from manzanita bushes taking over. He can go out there with his chainsaw, okay, and take care of that. And that's not earth moving. And I don't think anybody's claiming it's grading. But in your case, it seems clear that your client did move earth for the purposes of cultivation.
Yeah, I think that's not, that's not in dispute, right? Their hand tools were used to plant the plants. Now, here's, here's what concerns me a little bit, though, about, about this line of reasoning, right? We've already ditched the idea of the threshold of requiring a permit as the definition of grading. We know the definition of prohibited grading is not just 50 cubic yards or whatever the permit threshold is. We know it's more searching than that, right? Where's the line? Can a farmer within their registered grow area put shovel to ground to plant a new plant? I mean, it seems to me that we're getting into an area that's very difficult to parse here. I mean, you know, there were hand tools used in this particular instance. At what point do we, do we, what's the boundary between, we can, so we can remove invasive vegetation, can we dig a hole? Do you understand what I'm saying? I think that the, the reading of N. Seven that says, well, looking at N. Seven, it either has to be, you can't, excuse me, you can't grade to expand your site or create a new site. Or you can't grade at all. But nowhere in an N. Seven, or even in the county's grading manual, is removal of invasive vegetation distinguished from digging a hole, distinguished from dragging your shovel along the ground to flatten an area. I mean, aren't we getting into-
Establishing terraces, establishing terraces is another step, literally and figuratively.
But the, see, the alternative that you propose would have, would have this result. Assume a person was growing on a slope in 2015 or earlier, did not move any soil, was planting under the trees, let's say, the live oaks, so couldn't be seen from the air. And so, that's his cultivation area. Under your interpretation, having done that, under the urgency ordinance, he can come in and not only whack down all the trees, but bring in a bulldozer and create terraces to his heart's content, right? Without violating the urgency ordinance. And so, that, it seems to me, is not a tenable, acceptable reading of the ordinance.
I would submit that it is, and here's why. There are other protections in place in this county against unsafe or environmentally unsound grading, right? If, if, as you suggested, Commissioner Wooster, someone were to come in with a bulldozer and start taking out trees and things like that, they would rapidly get to the point of requiring grading. Right? No one's suggesting that growers ought to be exempt from all the other strictures on grading. But my suggestion to this commission is that section N. Seven is not really about protecting against unlawful grading. What it's really about is maintaining this, preventing gardens from expanding beyond the site, the boundaries that they were registered for. I think that's the intent of N. Seven. And there are other protections, you know, throughout the county code against removal of protected vegetation, things that would, would require a grading permit, things that could contaminate water supplies. So, by saying, the point of N. Seven is to keep growers within their, the bounds of their original registration, which I believe it is. I don't think we need to accept a world where growers can just grade willy-nilly. I think it's recognizing N. Seven for what it's really intended to accomplish and all the other protections against rampant grading that would apply to any other person, plus continue to apply to the cultivators.
But I think that would read the first sentence right out of the ordinance. Because if the only protection was if you're moving more than 50 cubic yards, you have to get a grading permit, then the first sentence of the ordinance is just superfluous. It doesn't mean anything. And to me, it's pretty clear, no grading. As of May 10, 2016, all grading and earth movement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation, and that's what we're talking about, shall have been completed.
And I-
It's pretty clear.
I recognize that's a prohibitory statement, but I think it, again, it needs to be read in context of the entire paragraph and the last sentence, which was displayed on, on the overhead. Because if, if we accept, if we accept that no, you know, we're just going to read that first sentence in isolation, I predict this commission is going to find itself having to decide, well, what is grading, what isn't grading, in increasingly kind of nuanced and almost arbitrary fashion. Because at this point, we know we're not going off the grading manual anymore because the grading manual would prohibit even minor vegetation removal. We know we're not going off what permit is required for because that threshold is 50 cubic yards. So, right now, we're creating kind of an ad hoc definition of grading, right? We said, okay, we can remove the manzanita bushes, maybe we can dig a hole, but we can't produce the appearances of terraces on a slope, right? Not only is that going to be difficult for folks to follow, but it's also going to put a burden on the department and on this commission of trying to figure out where the line is. Because at this point, it's not in any clear statute that I can see.
We're repeating the same thing over and over and so forth. I'd like to see if any other commissioners have questions. Okay?
Mr. Lamby, in your letter dated October 30, your brief, you've attached some pictures.
That's correct.
I don't think you've displayed those in your presentation.
Are they the photos of plants, Commissioner?
The one I'm looking at in particular-
Yes, I don't believe I have that on the overhead, but I'm familiar with it.
It's on the page just before the copy of the inspection report.
I can pull it up if that would be helpful, otherwise I'm familiar with it.
Well, it shows this is a terrorist plot. This is not a situation that I can see based on that picture and what I believe the other photos show. It's not a situation of hand shoveling or scraping the earth with minor hand equipment. It looks like it's been bladed into terraces. Are you denying that it was, that terraces were expanded after May 10, 2016?
Right. So, I have no, I have no knowledge of what occurred before those photos were taken. I, so I-
I'm not talking about before. I'm talking about after May 10. Did your client, yes or no, produce extra long terraces more than what was there on May 10, 2016?
I understand that. I'm just trying to give a complete answer. And so, the answer is, I don't know how the terraces that are in the 2015 photos got created, whether with blades or anything else. What I'm saying is indeed, they were expanded in the, between 2016 and 2017. That's not in dispute, so I agree with you, yes. And my, my statement is that that expansion, if you will, was done with hand tools. I don't know what the terraces visible in the 2015 photos were created with. I'm just talking about the expansion between 2016 and 2017.
And is it your argument that that expansion was not grading?
Well, so, it was, it was not grading such as would require a permit. It was grading-
Why not?
Because I don't think more than 50 cubic yards-
You don't think? You don't, is it your client? Is your client going to tell us? If you don't know the facts, then perhaps your client can tell us. It certainly looks, from these photos, that grading requiring 50 cubic yards, or we're pretty close to it, was done after May 10. Something was done beyond hand shoveling, I think.
Okay, and I-
And you don't know, and I don't know.
And I will get Mr. Forbes up here to answer that question momentarily. I just want to make one point. We have two definitions of grading that we're operating with. We're operating with the planning, the manual, the, that defines grading very broadly, right? And then we're operating with the threshold of what would require a permit, 50 cubic yards. And all I'm saying is that it's agreed that grading within the definition of the manual occurred between 2016 and 2017. That's not in dispute. I'm saying, and my client can confirm or deny this, my understanding is that it wasn't grading such as would require permits. But the overarching point that I'm making is even if grading within the definition of the manual occurred in that area, which it did, it was not for purposes of expanding the site. It was within the footprint of the registered grow and how the grow existed in 2015. So, with that, Jacob, do you want to come answer Commissioner Moselli's question?
So, what was your question again, sir?
Did you construct in any way additional terraces after May 10, 2016?
Yes, I put plants in the ground. I dug holes to put them-
No, it's not the question.
No, I did not terrace, no.
Did you construct terraces?
No, sir. The terraces were formed from the holes that we dug and put plants in. Because our holes are big enough to push dirt to the side, and then when we walk on them, it forms a terrace-style look to it. But I did not form terraces first.
So, terraces were constructed by the simple-
By digging, yes, sir. And putting my plants in the ground.
What did you use to dig these holes?
Picks, shovels.
Augers?
Augers. Correct.
Backhoe?
No, sir.
Thank you.
If you look at the, I have another question for Mr. Forbes. If you look at the photo- If you look at the photo, I guess it's 2015, the one with the dog in it, that's attached to your...
Yes, 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 I know what you're talking about.
Those terraces were, how were they created?
They were created by digging, hand digging, and making the holes. Because our holes are big enough to where when we, when we make them, they form terrace on the side, and then we have to walk on them also. So it, it forms a, a type of path, pathway on each side of the plant, so that we can move around.
So you're saying that all of the terracing that's been done up to the present was done during the process of digging holes to put plants in?
Correct, sir.
You, you don't use these smart pots, then I take it?
I actually didn't use the smart pots, because I thought they looked tacky out on side of the hill where people can see, because my, my acreage is people can see from each side. And my, also, my neighbor behind me, you know, isn't happy with what I'm doing, and I was trying to be, you know, towards him, thinking, oh, it'll look like his vineyard. And so I wanted to blend in with the earth like his did, so that it looked nicer.
So you're, you're telling us the only earth moving that happened was digging holes, basically?
Correct.
And then walking around where the holes were dug?
Correct, on the other end of where the expansion supposedly was done.
And there was, there was no, no mechanized equipment used in this process at all?
No, sir, just, just the, the augers.
And what, what did you do with the dirt that you took out of the holes? Put it back when you put the plants in?
It, it goes to the side, and that's what I was saying, that that's, it gets pushed to the side, and then that's when we stomp on it, it forms a terrace. And so it looks like it's been terraced, but it really is just from digging holes.
When you, when you dig the hole, after, after you dig the hole and you put the plant in, doesn't some of the dirt go back in the hole?
Some of it does, yes, sir.
Together with what, soil amendments and stuff like that?
Correct.
And then, but then you have some excess dirt that you just spread around?
That is on the side, yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Okay. Then I think what I, if you're finished, we're finished, we'd like to maybe take some public comment now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on this particular appeal? Flip a coin, gentlemen.
My name is Jim Jamison. I am the neighbor off to the east of this particular grow here. My house is about, I don't know, maybe about 500 feet from where those greenhouses are. And I've watched this go. I've, I've lived in that house for 35 years. I watched this whole process. And I watched when it originally was put in. It was put in as a garden with, with the plants in the ground. That was the year of the fire, it was 2015. I watched the next year, as that was, it was terraced, it was terraced with a tractor. They, they moved pots in 2016, and then at the end of the 2016 harvest is when these greenhouses started to appear. So there really has been grading going on in, on this particular parcel over the last two years, major grading. As a matter of fact, I believe on the first grading, there was not a permit issued to move that dirt, and the county did come out and put a stop work on, on the excavation of this property. I believe it was the... Hold on, guys, I'm a little nervous. So it was, I want to say the building department, but it wasn't the building department.
Code compliant, the site?
Yes. So they came out and they put a stop work order on the excavation, because a lot of soil had been moved. And on the second year, there was more excavation. That is when that outdoor, the pad that ultimately has the greenhouses on it, that was cut in. And there was a tractor that spent more than a month grading all of that out. And I have watched this over the last two years. It's the way it has been. This is, those greenhouses and that six-foot barbed wire and, and mesh fence is my front yard. This is all transpired over the last, course of the last several years. It's not real conducive to a residential area. I understand that this is an agriculture, this is owned agriculture, but this is, this, this property is in the middle of a subdivision. And it's not a barbed wire fence and, and, and greenhouses and, and is, is not what I would desire of my next-door neighbor. So that's all I have to say, but I've watched this.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know with the microphones, it's hard to tell where voices are coming from. You saw a tractor grading for the greenhouses. Did you also see a tractor expanding the, the terraces that, in the picture on the right there, are above the greenhouse?
Above the greenhouses?
Well, I mean, I, I, on, on the hill, it's probably below the greenhouse, but what I'm saying, I've...
The, the, the grading that took place earlier last year, first part of last year, was from where the, the house or the, the, the building is up in the upper portion of the, of the property. It started the, the, the original... The, the original grow was right in this area over here. And that was when the plants were in the ground. That was, last year, this area here was planted, and that area was planted in pots. So that, that area was, was, was leveled off prior to those pots going in.
Now, right where your, your dot is right now, now, now go to your, a little bit to your left and down, it sounds like we're doing something else here. Let's, the, the terracing that we're interested in down from there is, I'm sorry, yeah, down on the picture, that right where you are?
Okay.
That's where we're interested, those seem to have been added since May 10th, 2016. And I'm just curious as to whether you noticed specifically whether tractors were used in that area to establish those, to extend those terraces from where they had been.
That's 2016?
Yeah.
I can't, I, I couldn't say for sure that it was prior to or after May of 2016. But I have, on two separate occasions, I have, tractor work was done over there.
Did you see these people planting in that same area on the, the left-hand edge of those terraces, of those, of that planted area? Did you see them actually digging holes like they've testified today?
I see, my, my view is from over here. And so what I see is, is, is in line with this right here. And again, last year, those were in pots, those were in some fiber, so they were not holes in the ground.
And you were here when he said that they were not in pots?
The original grow, which was down here, was in the ground. Last year's grow was above ground.
What about this year's? Right, right now?
This year's, this year's in the greenhouses up here.
Only in the greenhouse?
I did not, yes, this, this, this area in here is, is no longer, there's no vegetation there. Everything that I can see is in these greenhouses.
Did you see them harvest this year?
I, 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 I work in Sacramento, so I am not home Monday through Thursday. So no, I did not actually see them harvest this year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other further public comment? And Miguel, could we put the sheriff's photo up there, please? Just, is that possible? Is there going to be any further public comment on this appeal? Okay. Thank you. Okay, if there are no further public comment, I will go ahead and close that and bring it back for rebuttal. Miguel?
I have none. Actually, I have something I'd like to show. Miguel, could you bring up the black and white photo of 2015?
I think that was on...
Actually, I'm to, go, go back to the site plan. What Mr. Lambie's relying on is a poorly drawn, inaccurate site plan to say, well, we were growing in this area, and therefore we should be able to expand it. If you compare that site plan with the aerial from May 31st... Go to the one before that without the, the, there. You can see that... You can see the shape of this very closely resembles what was on the site plan. There was a flat pad area and terraces here. Go back to the site plan for a minute. It came down to the corner of the, the cultivation site, the flat pad, here are the terraces here. It did not wrap around the site plan. And to try to rely on this inaccurate drawing to say, oh, well, we, you know, we were 75 feet from the, the fence line here, you know, it just, it doesn't represent reality. All right, if you go to the, go, go back to the, that one. These plants here are oak trees. And now go to the black and white, 2015. Each one of these dots that he represented as being cannabis plants are the oak trees that are on site. So there was clearly no cultivation. You could see from the aerial imaging from May of 34th, May of 2016, that there was no cultivation activity in that area until after these terraces were created. And so whether they were done by hand or by, you know, mechanical equipment, it really doesn't matter. Earth movement took place, a lot of handwork, probably would have been a lot easier if you'd used tobacco or a tractor. But he moved earth for the purpose of expanding the cultivation.
And that was...
And it wasn't reflected on the site plan. The site plan was just simply inaccurately drawn. And so I think that the recommendation of staff should stand, and that they clearly moved earth for the purpose of expanding the cultivation site.
And as I understand it, the, the definition of grading does not require power equipment, just the movement of earth, correct?
It, it does not require that. And one other point, we do not use the May or June aerials as a baseline. They're simply the most, you know, the, the closest representation we have to what was on the ground on, on May 10th. You know, if it doesn't show up on the May 31st aerial, then it clearly wasn't there before that. And Mr. Lambie is, you know, accurate in saying that it, the requirement was that cultivation had to have been occurring, you know, in the area prior to May, you know, on or before May 10th. But there's nothing in the documentation, none of the photos that were submitted, clearly not the aerial imaging, that would document that there was any cultivation that had occurred in the area where the grading occurred prior to May 10th or on or before May 10th.
Well, isn't, isn't there an argument that, that cultivation was occurring in that area in 2015, not in 2016?
That is their argument. But there's no, nothing in either the 2015 aerial, black and white is a little fuzzy, or the, any of the information that we have, either from the 2016 aerials or the photographs submitted with the, with the application, to show that cultivation was occurring in the area that expanded in 2017.
But that isn't essential for the county to prevail today as long as grading occurred within that area, isn't that correct?
Well, I think the argument was that...
Well, I, I know, I understand the argument, but I mean, assuming that he's right that this all happened within a cultivation area, grading that occurred within that area past May 10th, 2016 would not be appropriate, correct?
Mr. Moselli?
Well, I, I agree with you, but the argument was that, well, this was already an area that was cultivated, and I would have to say that it wasn't an area that was cultivated.
No, I, I understand. We've got two, two points, but even if he's right on that point, the cultivation area point, excuse me, sorry, if grading occurred within that area after May 10th, I, I assume it's the position of the planning department that that would be a violation of the ordinance.
Yes.
And I don't hear any emphasis on the word establishing. The sentence in N seven that we're focusing on, the second sentence, actually, it's the third, I think, no additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding. So even if their argument is they did shovels, using hand shovels and whatever, and made terraces to plant the plants in this newer area, it's part of that establishment of this 22,000 square foot plot, they're still violating that. They, they just...
We would use...
Either way, it's a violation.
We've interpreted the term establishment would be to create a new cultivation area. If you had a cultivation area, as this, you know, clearly did, but added to it, that would be the expansion. So for establish or expansion. If it had been raw land, there was no cultivation there, they graded, and, and, and we've had some of those appeals in the past where there's clearly nothing there prior to May 10th, and then they came in after the fact and established a new cultivation area. And that's why we use both the term establish and expansion.
I would think, though, that improvement of a cultivation area would be part of an establishment of a cultivation area, that it wouldn't necessarily have to be a new area. To make that sentence consistent with the first sentence of N seven, it seems to me that establishing is, would include improving an existing cultivation area.
Well, if I understand their argument, it is that the cultivation area includes what was cultivated in 2015. And the argument is that there was cultivation in the area that was eventually terraced, if you will, in 2017, that took place in 2015. The argument further is that when that 2017 terracing, if you will, was established, it wasn't grading or earth moving, because all it was, was digging holes in the ground to put plants in, and then spreading the dirt around. And so it doesn't qualify as grading or earth moving. And so their argument is they didn't expand or establish a new cultivation area, number one, because it was used in 2015. And number two, they didn't grade or earth move at all in 2017, because they just put more plants in the ground. That's the argument. If I understand the planning department's position, it is that there was not sufficient evidence of cultivation in this expanding area in 2015, or at any time prior to 2017.
Correct. That's correct.
And when the expansion did take place, it was done with earth moving.
Also correct.
Okay. So I just have a real quick question here, because we're back and forth on this grading. Miguel, do you have any record of code compliance citing, citing this lot for earth moving and grading? Miguel, do you have any record of code compliance citing this lot for earth moving and grading?
I don't have any recollection or any record of that. If you'd like to, who'd be in the records?
I, I would like, because that would pretty much end this conversation.
Well, I, I think from what I understood from the, um, the neighbors' testimony, that actually occurred prior to, um, that happened in 2015 or early 16, which would have been prior to the, um, the urgency ordinance and the May 10th deadline.
I thought he said 2016.
Early.
Early 2016.
Early 2016. Okay, so it was pre the May 10th deadline?
I mean, one other way to resolve that is to simply look at the photograph as well. I mean, to anyone who has moved earth before or poured concrete, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious.
Well, that's why I wanted to look at the sheriff's photo, because this photo for 2000, this was dated, what? What's the date on that one?
August 22nd.
August 22nd.
Okay, so, yeah, if you look at that, and then you go back to May 31st... There are different views, but that is significant changes to me.
It's hundreds of yards.
I agree. Okay, um, but we need to, if no one has any other further questions, I'm gonna take rebuttal back to the appellant.
Thank you, commissioners. I want to be clear on, on our argument, because Commissioner Wooster summed it up almost right, but there's, there's one point I want to make. No one, no one on our side is disputing that grading within the, uh, meaning of the grading manual occurred here. That's, that's not in dispute. We, you know, we, we maintain it was done, uh, with hand tools, but we agree that it doesn't matter how it was done, and we agree that it occurred. The question is, did it occur for purposes of expanding or establishing the grow site? That's what, in our view, this appeal turns on. So, we're not, we're not asking for a finding that grading within the meaning of the manual didn't occur. No question it did. We're saying, why did that grading occur? Did it occur because we were expanding the 2016 site? Or did it simply occur within the perimeter of the 2015 site? And I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Mauer's assertion that there's no evidence of cultivation in that area, uh, in 2015. Uh, the aerial that was up earlier, the gray one, uh, which Mr. Mauer, uh, says, oh, well, everything on the westerly side is oak trees. I'm not in agreement with that. I agree that there are oak trees within that, uh, area, but there, there are quite a number of, uh, small plants here. I'm not, I'm not, uh, at all would not concede that that is, we ought to just dismiss this aerial. And also, I think we ought not to dismiss the site diagram as just being sloppy work because, you know, we don't like it. It, it, it's, it's quite specific in what the setbacks are. Um, and so, to say simply because, you know, we were not in agreement with this diagram, now that it was a mistake, I think, uh, is not giving due weight to the evidence. So, just to be clear about what we're arguing here, and I think, I think the commission, to the extent it rules against my clients, ought to be very clear on what its basis is, just for the benefit of, of clarifying what the rules are here. We're saying that, yes, grading within the meaning of the manual occurred on the site, there's no question about that. Our sole argument is that it was within the perimeter of the 2015 cultivation site, and therefore, it wasn't for purposes of expanding the grow or establishing a new one. And if the commission rules against my clients today, I think it should be clear about its basis, right? Is it ruling that it, it simply disbelieves that there was cultivation there in 2015, and therefore, any grading was for purposes of expansion, right? It's just a question of fact. The commission doesn't find that there was sufficient evidence of plants there, therefore, it was for expansion? Or is the commission saying that any grading within a site after May 10th is a violation of the urgency ordinance? I think the, that, the basis of an adverse decision today is very important, because folks are gonna look to that for guidance. And if the commission's ruling is that any great, any earth moving within the perimeter of a registered site after May 10th is a violation of the UO, uh, frankly, I, I fear the, uh, that that's going to be a very hazy standard to follow, because at this point, we're not talking about the definition of grading in the manual, or the, the threshold at which a permit is required, but essentially, a kind of ad hoc distinction between permissible brush removal, maybe digging a hole, and, you know, the line is very fuzzy. Whereas, if the commission is simply disbelieving that there were plants there in 2015, then so be it, you know, we would disagree with that position. But I think that's an important distinction to make, so I'll leave you with that.
Well, what is the photographic evidence, again, of cultivation in this expanded area prior to May 10th, 2016?
So, we have three pieces of evidence. We have the diagram, uh, which is before you. Uh, we have that, uh, rather hazy aerial, uh, that one, um, which does so, I mean, undeniably shows plants in the, uh, westerly area here. Um, it's also not disputed that there are some oak trees there, I think that's correct. Um, I don't think all of those plants are oak trees, though. And then, thirdly, we can have testimony from, uh, my client himself, that he was planting in that area in 2015. Uh, he's prepared to testify to that.
Didn't, did you have, you had a black and white photograph where you were trying to establish the cultivation area, weren't, didn't you?
It's the same photograph as the one up there.
It is the same one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had simply drawn some red lines on it of this triangle to help provide a point of reference.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, Ms. Clousey, here and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation.
Can you hear my phone, Ms. Sp?
You want to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, who wants to start?
Well, I'll start on the issue of the, uh, of, uh, what N7 is requiring, and I think the first sentence is very clear, and I think the language that Mr. Lambie is relying upon is in elaboration of the, uh, provision having to do with the, the grading for the setback. And I, I would tend to say that the, the, the first sentence and the sentence that Mr. Lambie is relying upon, uh, that they are not contradictory. I think that the purpose of establishing or expanding, I think the intention was, uh, to go back to, uh, an all-inclusive statement in the first sentence. So, I, I think that the, uh, that we, we have the admission that there was grading here, uh, the argument that it is without, uh, that, that it was within the grow area and therefore, it was permitted by N7, I, I do not accept that. I'd like to hear the other commissioners', uh, thoughts on whether the, the, it was within the grow area that existed as of 2015, uh, because there's no reason we have to make this an either-or decision. We can decide that if it were not within the grow area, clearly, it's a violation. But if, if we decide that it is in the grow area, we can also decide that there is a violation on the grounds that I was just stating.
Well, I think it was in the grow area as depicted on the initial application. Uh, but Mr. Lambie's argument misstated one thing. He said that it was for establishing new, he used the word new, area. Uh, the code said, doesn't use the word new. It says, "No additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016." I don't know how more clear it can be. It's not ambiguous, it's clear. They did, in fact, grade or earth move. Probably their best argument is part, part of establishing the area that was designated in the initial application, but that's a violation of N7.
Yeah. You bring up a very good point, in that it's saying establishing or expanding, those are two, uh, alternatives.
Thank you.
And, and I believe Mr. Lambie's approach is establishing means expanding, and expanding means expanding, and that's, uh, contrary to the rules of interpretation.
I, I agree with Mr. Laddis that the first sentence is clear, and that grading or earth moving, um, post-May 10th, uh, and then cultivating on it is, um, is a violation. And in this case, we don't have to concern ourselves with the definition of grading or earth moving, because it's agreed that that happened for purposes of this ordinance. Whether or not the grow area was within the site plan, I don't think is particularly relevant here, and I don't think there's sufficient evidence that there was cultivation in this area prior to May 10th, 2016. I mean, if I look at the various pictures, including the one of May 31, I don't see any evidence of anything happening in this area in question prior to that, in 2015 or earlier. It's, it's brush and trees. And so, I would deny the appeal on both grounds. One, they did expand the cultivation area from what had been cultivated earlier, or established a new one, whichever way you want to look at it. And they did grade past May 10th for that purpose.
Attorney, my guy. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I agree with all three of the gentlemen. They've all made really strong points. I think that Mr. Lambie is a great attorney, he plays with words a little bit. They did grade after May 10th, and to me, it's black and white, they graded after May 10th.
Okay, so, I'm gonna agree as well. That first sentence is pretty clear to me. I believe that both rulings that Mr., Commissioner, I don't even know you anymore, Wooster, had pointed out are stated facts. I believe Commissioner Bocelli is correct in the word using, because that was where I was headed as well, is the establishing. It's, it's pretty well worded for me, um, so I'm also going to uphold the, um, planning department's denial. So, if you are all good, and you want to say something?
I have a procedural question. This is not an actual denial of an application, right?
Correct.
An application or a registration that's being referred to word-
Invalidated.
Invalidated is one of the words? And some other words?
We've used the term revocation. The code says invalidate. I believe that they are interchangeable. If you feel more comfortable, we could substitute the word invalidate for revoke or revocation.
So, the option of-
The action here is to deny the appeal. The action that the planning department, that I took, was to revoke the, the registration or to invalidate the registration, because it had been previously issued.
So, there's no option of looking at reducing the square footage or anything like that? It's simply invalidating the entire registration?
That was the action that the planning department took.
There is one typo in the resolution. On page two, under finding number one, on the evidence, the second sentence says approximately 5,100 square feet of cannabis cultivation activity existed in the north cultivation area as of May 31, 2017, should be 2016.
And I'd also add to that sentence, since I found the sheriff's office photograph to be particularly telling, uh, so that sentence where it now ends June 28th, I'm sorry, it doesn't end there, where it says, "Google aerial imagery from June 28th, 2017, and Calaveras Sheriff's Office aerial imagery from August 22nd, 2017," comma. I just make that insertion.
I agree with that.
That's fine. Okay, anything further? Okay, Miguel, would you like to read the recommendation, please?
So, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 2017 dash 084, as amended and corrected by the commissioners, denying appeal 2016 dash 2, uh, 238, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to invalidate registration 2016 dash 238.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five o. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
And if Mr. Lambie is aware, this action is appealable within 15 calendar days.
Thank you, Peter.
So, it is 11:30. We can go to lunch now for an hour, then come back, so we don't interrupt the next hearing. How would you guys feel about doing that?
That would be fine.
Good? Okay. We're gonna take a one-hour lunch. Thank you.